Thank you everyone for your cooperation and for being here this evening. Welcome to our Montgomery Township School District Board of Education Open Public Meeting. It is Tuesday, September 26th, 2023. The time is 7:35 PM. We thank you all for your presence and participation this evening. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
What do we do? This is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, our God, in this world, where we see justice for all.
Everyone please come seated. Roll call please. Four seconds to every train.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Ms. Dowling.
Here.
Ms. Philak.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Spina.
Present.
Ms. Leleka Dernigan.
Here.
Mr. Todd.
Here.
Ms. Franco Herman.
Present.
Dr. Spencer Wallace.
Present, present you. And at this time, we will hear from Ms. Sophia Rock, who will deliver our senior representative's report tonight.
Good evening. We've had a great past two weeks at Montgomery High School, filled with lots of excitement and success for our students. Students are settling into their schedules and school routines. The freshmen are getting better at navigating the building, and sophomores are getting used to their new lunch spots. The juniors are studying for the PSATs, which is extremely important for the National Marriage Scholarship. All 10th and 11th grade students are highly encouraged to take the PSATs, which are on October 10th. Seniors are busy writing their college essays, marking the start of a stressful season, and looking forward to senior sunrise this Friday. Senior sunrise is one of the few times a year that you'll see seniors excited to be at school before 7:00 AM. We recently hosted a successful back-to-school night where Montgomery parents got the opportunity to get a view of what their children are learning and meet their teachers. Our amazing peer leaders were there to help guide parents on where to go and be friendly faces to some very lost parents in a very big school. Just as we welcomed our parents to back-to-school night, we are always welcoming up everyone at MHS. Now, there is now a new student lunch group. With the addition of over 50 new students from all over the world to MHS this school year, this fun and informative student group provides a great opportunity for new students to get to know one another and connect. Clubs and activities have started, and with the beginning of interest meetings and so much more, things are back in full swing. Our volleyball and soccer players are working hard with the start of their respective seasons, and we will be wishing them the best of luck with their respective games. Our football team has had an astounding 100th win for the Montgomery Panthers Football Program. And as a side note, if we win the next two games, our homecoming game will be the 100th personal win for Coach Milich. Our homecoming theme was recently revealed, is tangled under the lights. Inspired by the Disney movie, our homecoming is set to be a fun-filled event. Homecoming will be a great break for some of our seniors applying to colleges. Last week, seniors were given presentations from the guidance counselors on the college application process. These presentations help students know all the ins and outs of how to apply to college, from starting your applications to letters of recommendation and so much more. Overall, the students at Montgomery are doing well and looking forward to continuing this year on a great note.
Thank you, Ms. Rock, for that amazing report. And at this time, I would superintend this report presentation. Superintendent McGlocklin, please.
Good evening, everyone. As we just settled into this school year, we've already begun planning for next school year. Collaboratively with the board, staff, including administrators and teachers, and my cabinet members, we drafted our 24-25 school calendar. So changes to the calendar, and I was hoping to have it on this meeting's agenda. It will be on next month's agenda. We were just waiting for parent-teacher conferences to be settled with the principles, to make sure that we have the accurate dates based on the grading cycle. So some of the new additions are, we have no school for students on the volley on Chinese Lunar New Year and on Eid, in addition to our winter break and our spring break, teacher convention weekends, and all the other national holidays that we always observe. So we look forward to everyone seeing our new calendar, and I want everyone to know that we listen to the community, we get the feedback, and we were able to successfully have a calendar that has all the requirements that we need for student attendance dates and for staff professional development dates. So thank you all for your input. The high school just hosted their back-to-school night. The peer leaders were there to help parents navigate the building, and they followed their children's schedules. Prior to the start of the evening, there were three amazing events for parents that were held. The high school PTA ran their traditional freshman parent boot camp to give a crash course on how to survive high school. The school counselors hosted a guidance roundtable discussing big-picture items and answering parent-led questions. And the child studies team members hosted a meet-and-greet where parents had the opportunity to spend time with their case managers and engage in information specifics of the special education programs of the high school. The night was well-attended and enjoyed by all. For Hispanic Heritage Month, the high school World Language Department, in collaboration with Senora Lozinski's Spanish five classes, is sponsoring a Hispanic Heritage exhibition that is located in the Media Center. This showcase of Spanish, Mexican, Central and South American and Caribbean history and culture highlights the rich dynamic and significant cultural contributions to the United States and the global society. Clubs have started and are in full swing at LMS and UMS. The late buses have begun at UMS. 8th grade students and their families are preparing for the upcoming Camp Mason trip next month. If you're out there listening, we still need some parent chaperones, please. There will be a 7th and 8th grade social on October 6th. LMS hosted its first call-in contest. Two students created a riddle displayed on the front sign, and during Friday morning meeting, home rooms had 15 minutes to agree upon an answer and call it in the front office to try to be the first of the top three callers with the correct answer to win a prize. Seems like it's a lot of fun. For the first time ever, the middle schools decided that on Sunday, October 15th, is their date for the first-ever school fall festival to welcome families to the shared campus and introduce the administration to the community while enjoying fall fun. At Orchard Hill, students are learning to, learning the habits of being good readers, always focused in the early weeks of the school year. One of the primary objectives is for students to set goals in order to reflect on their reading while also getting settled into their reading needs, which is very important. That's all for this report. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent McGlocklin for that report. And before we commence with the next item on our agenda, public comments specific to our action agenda items, and the subsequent to the admonishment of our board attorney, I'm going to read a civility statement. So, and our board attorney is Stephen Fowery. He's sitting to my right and your left.
Good evening.
In the context of adhering to Robert's rules, while conducting our school district's Board of Education's Open Public Meeting, civility is about how people treat each other and how people respect the meeting protocols. Civility involves the display of respect for those who have positions with which one disagrees. Even though disagreement plays a necessary role in governance, the issue is how one expresses that disagreement. The board believes in listening to the concerns and values that underline people's diverse perspectives during public comment. However, all persons that speak during the two public comment times must state their name and address, as well as write it in the notebook provided at the podium. Also, each speaker must face and address the Board of Education, not the community seating area. Public comment time is not structured as Q and A or debate. The board chair, the board secretary, or superintendent may ask the speaker to clarify points. Otherwise, the speaker is allotted three minutes to speak in a manner that is respectful and decent, not defaming and accusatory. After speaking and confirming with our board attorney, our meeting rules prohibited clapping, shouting, booing, or other forms of agreement or disagreement of a speaker's points from the audience. If necessary, the board will suspend the meeting so that a reminder may be issued to the person or persons to regain order. The board is regulated to conduct the open public meeting to address and vote on the business of the district. This is not a public platform for the community. The community are invited to observe the work of the board. And this expectation is consistent where the boards do be served as a guardrail, representative of the community, advisory to the administration, not to run the school district. Most recently, the board, community members, and district staff have described our board meetings as uncivil. Ouch. Some points of view rely on drowning out others, resulting in turning up the volume, which leads to a decrease in the civility of our meetings. The key is to focus on the strengths of proposed solutions to community problems or perception of problems or areas to improve, not to engage in personal attacks against those who favor a different solution. On a day-to-day basis, the board grapples with difficult policy and fiscal challenges, as well as believing in our professional staff to drive student achievement. Our purpose is to create a culture of acceptance for differing points of view while taking care of important or related matters. So we thank you and the administration in advance for your cooperation. Thank you, everyone. So as mentioned, we've arrived at the action agenda item public comment, and I'll read the instructions as follows. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input by the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, however, please state your name and address and write it in the notebook provided at the podium. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker. The board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting, as already stated, are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been first handled through the appropriate chain of command, typically starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. So, Board Secretary Trent, would you please start? Our public comment for action agenda items only is not open. And this is for our action agenda items that are published on our agenda that's located on the table. Do any community members have any public comments specific to our action agenda? Hearing none? And please just cite the numbers that we can for reference. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Day Church from Montgomery Township.
Which action agenda item?
It is item 2.7, Community-Based Instruction 2023 to 2024. When the agenda came out that I saw on Friday, it listed under Princeton, Hi Tops. My question is, why was it listed there? Why since Monday was it removed? And if you could give some details about that? And also, it's just confusing to people when they get an agenda. The second one that we're looking at now, the latest one, doesn't say updated. If I missed it, I'm sorry, but it doesn't say the agenda is updated. So people will get the agenda maybe on Friday or Saturday, not realize it has been updated. So, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments specific to action agenda items only? All right, hearing none. Superintendent McGlocklin, our action agenda items public comment is not closed. Would you please respond to the questions of the community member if you're able to work this down?
Sure, 2.7 was one of the agenda items that was submitted in error. It was an old document. The new document was uploaded. I think the original one was sent out around 4:30 PM on Friday. It was sent out early morning Saturday, so it wasn't there till even again. I don't know why it didn't say updated. If it usually does, I will look into that.
All right, thank you Superintendent McGlocklin. So it is at this time, and on behalf of the Board of Education, we do apologize for any inconvenience, but it's at this time. Then I'm going to deliver a motion to the floor. I mean that we enter into our second and final executive session so that a confidential matter concerning a group of our staffing types may be discussed. The estimate of time will be approximately 15 to 20 minutes. Roll call please. Board Secretary Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. Ms. Dowling.
Here.
Ms. Philak.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Spina.
Present.
Ms. Leleka Dernigan.
Here.
Mr. Todd.
Here.
Ms. Franco Herman.
Present.
Dr. Spencer Wallace. Soers.
Present.
Michelle. We're going to resume the meeting at this time. Thank you, everyone, for your silence. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, again, for your cooperation and your patience as the board address that confidential personnel matter. So now, we've reached the point of our agenda for committee and board representative reports, starting with MTEA. Excuse me? Started with MTEA, delivered by Vice President Karen Kaborki.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent McGlocklin, members of the community, administrators, and my colleagues. I'm Karen Kaborki. I teach 8th grade language arts here at the middle school. I'm also first vice president of the MTEA, and I'm a lifelong community member. So tonight, I'm going to deliver the MTEA report because Jim is feeling a bit under the weather. So as you know, for the past 10 years, our administrators and our association have committed to working together collaboratively on some of the important issues that affect our students, since we are all educators and we have the same goal. And each year, we all strive to improve what we do and how we do it by strengthening our collaborative structures.
Excuse me, Ms. Kaborki. I'll have to speak directly to the microphone so people in the back of the room can hear. Oh, sure, sir. Thank you.
Should I start something again?
No.
You're not the right one. Sounds like a student.
No executive privilege here.
But each year, we all strive to improve what we do and how we do it by strengthening our collaborative structures, which are the district leadership team, or DLT, and five school leadership teams, which are the SLTs. We've heard many presentations over the years from our various SLTs, and we look forward to sharing our efforts and accomplishments again as this year progresses. At our September DLT meeting, we continued to work on this year's goal of increasing student achievement, which is, of course, aligned with one of the district goals. Each building's representatives shared their plans to reach all learners, especially through UDL, so everyone on the DLT now has a whole district perspective, and we can help one another succeed. We look forward to continuing our DLT and SLT work as we focus on making sure that our students feel confident and confident, which is why every one of us is here. Thank you.
No clapping is required, but thank you nonetheless. Board members delegate representative reports.
Yes. Or then Ms. Spina will deliver the MCEPT.
So I just wanted to let everyone know that the MCEPT had a wonderful fall festival last week at Van Horn Park, and extended.
Or then Ms. Spina, please speak into the microphone so people in the back of the room can hear you, and you do not have to start over.
Fall Fest last Friday, a big thank you to local Benny Aminos and Tiger's Tale, as well as our Montgomery Police Department for having a wonderful vehicle there that all the kids got to kind of go see all the cool ins and outs of. That was a really nice event, so thanks to MCEPT for doing that. MCPAD next meeting will be on October 2nd, and the report will be delivered at the public BOE meeting on the 17th. But in between then, because we won't see you before then, I just wanted to remind everybody that the MCEPT has invited Dr. Laura Bernes to do a presentation on recognizing and responding to adolescent childhood anxiety. It will be here on October 11th, and I believe it's 7th, yeah. Any questions?
Okay, hearing your questions, we'll move on to our Board of Education Committee report, starting with ACI. It continues to be a pleasure to serve as the Chair of the ACI Committee this calendar year. The Assistant Superintendent Damian Papa is the co-chair. We conducted a hybrid meeting on Wednesday, September 13th. At the beginning of the meeting, the Director of Instructional Technology, Jeff Brooks, reported out on the identification of the new LMS Financial Literacy textbook, the Lemonade Wars 21st Century Skills. This textbook will accompany the class's use of technology and support the curriculum. The students will learn about real life, sales, challenges, skills, and business etiquette. Next, the Director of Professional Development and Curriculum and Instruction, say that really fast three times, Fiona Borland, presented for the interim Director of Special Services, Mary Pat Publica, to report on the LLD, Learning and Language Disability Pull-Out Replacement Programs, grades K through 5, and the Preschool Disabilities Program. The CKLA, Core Knowledge Language Arts, is a literacy program that is a combination of language arts curriculum resources. CKLA is based on the science of reading. It is a data-driven program that allows students to achieve skills-based, structured, styled learning. A committee of staff members reviewed student performance data to identify our students' area of need to further grow their skills acquisition. It's important that, as a district, we make sure there is consistency in our programs for students who spend years in the LLD setting. Implementation will commence this fall. Training for staff will be held on October 9th and in-service date for teachers. Now, germane to the preschool program. There were four state-approved preschool curriculum programs where each public school in New Jersey was mandated to select only one. Thus, Montgomery chose to purchase the creative curriculum. This evidence-based curriculum is designed, excuse me, to foster development of the whole child through teacher-led, small, and large group activities centered around many modalities, such as blocks, dramatic play, sand and water, and more. To that, the 23-24 school year will be a transition year with full implementation expected during the 24-25 school year. Again, the PD for teachers for this curriculum will be held on October 9th. A trainer has been brought in to the district to provide support to our preschool teachers. And I think there's about 75 students who participate in our preschool program. The 29,000 estimated cost includes professional development for all of our staffing, and that will be ongoing, and online bundle and assessment tools. This data-driven program prepares students for kindergarten readiness. So next, the State Department of Education released a notice of grant opportunity for public school districts throughout New Jersey to apply for a high-impact tutor funding. One of the unique features is that the state provided districts with a vetted list of outsourced vendors. The grant defines high-impact tutoring as at least three times a week for no less than 30 minutes with a 3:1 student-teacher ratio. The grant is primarily intended for students in grades 3 and 4, but we were permitted to expand to 5th grade as well. So our application includes 5th graders. The grant is being offered to address interrupted learning students faced during the pandemic's disruption. In preparation for lighting this grant, Ms. Borland met with the MTEA supervisors and building administration so that we would develop a tutoring program that followed the program requirements with students during the school day. The district has submitted the grant application ahead of its due date. This is a competitive grant that will be awarded based on district's needs, and we will be updated about this grant status by mid-October. The Board of Education continues to field questions around the selection of textbooks for non-health-related courses. It is important to the BOE that parent and student feedback is captured in some form as a way to build the parent's connection with their child's teacher and with the school. Montgomery families have spoken out about alternative textbooks when the required one is contrary to their family's beliefs. Since 1980, NJSA 18A 35-4 statute permits parents to opt out of the family-wide curriculum or health curriculum. The opt-out feature is not applicable for other subject areas. As board members, it is our ethical duty to not only vote on the hiring of professionals who are trained to identify textbooks that provide meaningful academic skill development, but also to uphold the mandates and laws set forth by the State Department of Education, the governing body for public schools, and the State Assembly. These professionals identify textbooks with a myriad of themes aligned to content standards and legislation, not to be disrespectful to any core family virtues. Exposure to diversity in our literature is important for the appreciation of other people and cultures. After all, what is literature but a mirror of the human experience, connections, and adventure? The ACI Committee is talking about ways that support parent, student, and staff feedback. And finally, the Director of Wellness, Cory Delgado, who is brand-new to the role, reported that all new student orientations went well. The department has identified a new platform, rep visits, to schedule college visits at Montgomery High School. This platform interfaces with Naveon to make Montgomery very accessible. There's been 80 visits scheduled so far this school year. And there were 113 students enrolled in our option-two classes, with 106 taking them online. Mr. Delgado stated he's looking for ways to build connections among all school counselors at all of our schools, as well as enhance new family transitions and the INRS process, intervention and referral services. In mid-October, all harassment intimidation and bullying staff will receive refresher training that will include consistency in documenting case details, especially those for Board of Ed review. So this concludes my ACI report. Do board members have any questions or comments at this time?
I have a question. So Hi Tops, which was recently on our agenda, they have a contract to work for the staff with respect to the state's required help and PE curriculum. Last year, they gave a presentation to us in town hall relating to their offer of help with the curriculum, and many people were uncomfortable with that concern. They sent me a link. I'll send, send a link to the board about a recent exposé on Hi Tops by Kurt. So last night, I watched it, and in it, Hi Tops personnel seemed less than 40. I had to be a little dark there. I'm sorry. I'm going to skip over this paragraph of examples because there's a lot of children here. But last year, I was uncomfortable, and after seeing these examples, I'm really concerned. But I understand that there's a stated fourth requirement for key tools on topics, but I think that we should look for another organization for this. I'd like to propose a motion that we end our relationship with Hi Tops and look elsewhere for this.
So, for the public, I just want to remind you about the language that you use. So you want to just move and then state the action? so you want to just move and then state the action that you elected.
I should have skipped on it.
I move that, okay?
I move that. So I move that we end our relationship with HITOPS and look elsewhere for this train. Is the second being discussed?
Okay, we have a second to this motion that's on the floor for this, and I'll open the floor for discussion, and my Board of Education members only at this time.
Mary, can I ask a question of you?
Mm-hmm.
Um, what, what does HITOPS provide for the district in terms of professional development?
So I actually have a list here. It provides staff development for meeting the requirements of the LGV2Q+ and People with Disabilities Education Act of January 2019, Chapter 32 DEI Act of March of 2021. It provides faculty staff development on sexual orientation and gender identity, which is called SOGE, in order to create a safe and firm environment for faculty, students, and families. Support our health teachers in understanding the new HPE NJSLS, the state standards. And provide affirmative school training to our schools from informed teams.
How long have you been working?
I think that is the summer of 2021.
This is the first time this HITOPS.
So we're here 2021, 2022.
So is this, this is the third school year?
Correct.
That they're implementing the training? So, I'm sorry, Board Member Stan, have you completed your series of questions?
Possibly. There might be follow-up.
Okay, fair enough. So Superintendent McLaughlin, based on the information and knowledge that you have at this time, what can you report to the Board are the benefits of this training? So, I think that's going to include, how have we measured the benefits of this training to the building and professional capacity of our professional staff as it aligns with the statutes that you mentioned earlier?
So we always have staff feedback forms, and we always receive high ratings for the feedback from the training that the staff has been provided. And staff are able to answer questions of parents and answer questions of students in the classroom that they provide.
Have they obtained any preliminary outcomes that may be shared with us as a result of the training with the staff here?
Outside of knowing that it makes the staff more comfortable in their lesson, in their lesson planning, and that staff serve.
Okay, so how has the organization, I guess with a lot of the better word, it's just, you know, build on or scaffolded the professional development that they're providing for our staff from year 1 to now year 3? I would need someone back to ask our professional developers to answer their question. Okay. Thank you, that's fair. Any other questions or comments have the Board members?
Uh, Mary, so it's my understanding that HITOPS and the Princeton School District has student contact. Does HITOPS have student contact in Montgomery?
No. Can you talk a little bit about how the organization was vetted in the first place in terms of working with us as a school district? It was done through the ACI Committee and our Instructional Services Department.
So at the, I think it was last summer, not this summer, but the summer before, I guess it was representative from HITOPS 15, and she spoke about how the new health curriculum will be implemented. And during that presentation, she made statements that are very consistent with the statements that were on that recording from Project Veritas, which was basically, um, they intentionally would implement, like they would, when they assisted with the curriculum built for, for the district, they would intentionally incorporate certain topics and issues that parents would not be able to up-cout of. So I'm just wondering if there was a study that was done that would maybe assess whether or not that was done just to the extent that they've all maintained that, you know, inclusion of those topics, or there was, you know.
Remember, Felix speaking to the microphone, the people in the back.
I just can't hear you. I thought I was screaming. So I guess I lost my train of thought.
I apologize.
Yes, okay. So I guess my question is whether or not there was any study that was done, and maybe it would be worthwhile to have a committee to look into it, similar to what Princeton did, that worked, assess whether or not the standards that we have in place are only whatever the standards they state, or maybe we just took an extra step that the parents are very concerned about.
So I can answer that. Our curriculum was written prior to HITOPS coming into the district, and as I stated, it's for professional development only, not curriculum writing or any student contact.
I just, one more comment here. I haven't, I've listened to the presentation that HITOPS had done a few summers ago. I think that the recent exhibit of some of the questionable actions that have taken place in Princeton, and having heard the initial presentation, I think it would be our duty and responsibility to halt the relationship we have with them thus far until more information is being shared, considering we don't have a lot of data on our side from a perspective of what they've delivered up to this point. And when I assess the cost that took, that actually cost the district to utilize HITOPS, we should have more input and more insight on results if we're spending that kind of money. And with the questionable actions right now, I think it would be irresponsible for us to continue the relationship with them.
Thank you, Board Member Lelek, and one moment, Board Member Harris. I just want to say that I think, um, at the expressions of our board members, there's sufficient controversy around this organization. However, um, it doesn't mean that or compromise that the Board of Education is fully committed, you know, with the training agencies and individuals that work diligently to build the capacity of all of our teachers and support staff and administrators. And it's important that these individuals or organizations or agencies, you know, do so with fidelity and where it's suitable and appropriate. And I think largely due to the Board's request in asking for more information from our superintendent, that she needs to conduct some research and gather some more data so that she can be better prepared and sufficiently respond to these statements. And board members, I would like to put a motion to the floor, but not without listening to Board Member Harris make her statement or question, submit her question.
Thank you. Iris is going to reiterate pretty much what you said, that, um, you know, like all decisions that we make as a board or as a, in our district, it's, you know, every decision, it's maybe with a great deal of research and thought and discussion. And to your point, I feel as though there's a little bit more information that we want to gather to make the most informed decision. And, um, we appreciate the feedback from the public, and I believe that I wouldn't want to jump too permanently discontinue any contract. But I think the next step, if that feels appropriate, would temporarily, I guess, hold the contract so we can discuss it further and gather more information to make sure that we're making a stronger start.
Madam President, I also want to make a comment just in support of doing due diligence and providing us with information about organization of HITOPS. But I also would like to reiterate that that Project Veritas is also a questionable organization, and we should rely on that as evidence that HITOPS is doing not a good job for our teachers.
Thank you, First VP Franco Hermann, Board Member Dowling, I think you signaled.
I just wanted to add a comment as well, but I feel like as a board, we've made headway in, um, in working on being transparent and transparency with our constituents, and I think it's really important to follow this train of getting more information, of being as transparent as we can, and to be loyal to what we've promised in terms of having parents be able to opt out. So I think we need to be really, really clear and transparent with how we work forward.
Board Member Sina and Dave Followup, Board Member Carlson.
So one last question is whether or not, what's the next scheduled PD session that HITOPS would be scheduled to give to the Board yet?
I don't have that information. Had I been asked these questions ahead of time, I would have been very prepared during this meeting.
I know.
But very hard.
Thank you.
Should I modify the motion, or can I modify the motion instead of the rest?
I'm gonna say they want, thank you, Board Member Carlson.
You have a motion on the floor, so.
So Madam President, there is a motion on the floor, and there's an opportunity to modify that motion by the mover and by the person who seconded, but in terms of our procedure, we need to resolve that first. Are you prepared to modify your motion rather than terminate the contract to suspend the contract until the next board meeting?
Absolutely.
The second?
So who's seconded that? Board Member Felix, so which one of you will modify that motion on the floor?
I think he does.
Oh, so I didn't hear it.
I think he did.
I'm sorry, I didn't even hear it.
I modify the motion to suspend rather than.
Rather than terminate?
Yes.
So the motion on the floor is to suspend the contract with HITOPS until the next meeting of the Board. And Madam President, I also would want you to be aware that we do have a contract for this school year at a cost of $33,250. So we also need to look into how that contract would be terminated if that's what the Board decides to do.
Right, thank you, Board Attorney Global, and those questions were submitted to our Business Administrator earlier today.
So, Board Secretary, Attorney, roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Felix.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lelek, again.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Hermann.
Yes.
Dr. Spence Wallace.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries on zero.
Thank you, Board Member Carlson, for submitting that motion, and everyone, Board Members, for your questions and your commentary. And thank you Superintendent McLaughlin for your anticipated diligence and follow-up. There will be expectation on behalf of the Board that you will be prepared with your presentation for our Tuesday, October 17, 2023, meeting for the public. All right, so next, go back. Our ACI Committee did not leave this one, so next, Second VP Todd with the Operations, Facilities, and Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Operations, Facilities, and Finance Committee met on Friday, September 15th. Those present were myself, Marty Carlson, Joanna Felix, Cookie Franco Hermann, Mary McLaughlin, Jack Trent, Dave Plumbbo, James Dolan, Jim Rodelle, Mike O'Neill, and Dwayne Washington Vasquez. Mr. O'Neill provided an update on the status of the facilities as schools opened up. According to Mr. O'Neill, everything has gone pretty well so far. One minor issue with B's on one of the school buildings, but that's been addressed. The ECC building has come along very well, and the staff members seem to like it. A fence is slated to be installed during the first week of October, and some windows will be installed as well. The larger security project is moving along. The conversion of the MHS entry system has begun, with five doors being completed. Another aspect of the project is installation of a new employee ID system that also functions as door access files. Software is up and running, and construction of the hard best rules is underway. We're currently waiting on the hard best rule, the buyers should be delivering at some point in October. Mr. Washington Vasquez gave the, an update on transportation. There were some minor issues, as can be expected at the start of any school year. Mr. Trent noted that Mr. Washington Vasquez's team has done a great job of responding to his issues. Many were fixed the same day or within the next day. This is typical start of school delays, but these delays are deciding when things are become, are starting to become normal. The buses are leaving school relatively on time. At the beginning of the school, the buses were about a half an hour late, but that delay has been reduced significantly. There are few hiccups, switched into the new transportation platform, but those have been addressed. Mr. Washington Vasquez likes the new system because he can access the system remotely from his cell phone, reducing calls to his office. Mr. Washington Vasquez also noted that the district is currently short two bus route, two bus drivers. However, that is currently being addressed. It's also noted that some members who also sit on CPAG have expressed concerns about the length of time special education students spend on bus. Mr. Washington Vasquez reviewed how the bus routes run to decrease those times. However, there are students that attend distant out-of-district placements, which cause students to be on the bus for a longer time. His department does try to set up the shortest bus routes when possible to these schools. Uh, the complaints for parents have started to subside regarding this, and they have decreased from past years. Uh, he also noted that community members do expect some delays at the beginning of the school year. However, he wants people to know that he can be reached at the Department of Transportation to discuss any inquiries. Uh, Mr. Washington, Mr. Washington Vasquez stated that transportation sends out emails to the community to keep them informed, and requested that they email the Transportation Department directly with any questions or concerns. Uh, on the first day, all the phones were being manned beginning at 6:00 a.m. However, there are only four staff members at the office, and they receive many calls from them at the beginning of the school year. A discussion also took place regarding the previously discussed district's agreement with Princeton for repairs and maintenance of their buses. Not much action happened in July, however, in August, we received about $8,000 in repair, noting that our buses are in much shape, better shape than Princeton buses. Next topic we discussed was the Regular Operating District Grant, also known as the ROD Grant. We submitted four projects, all which were approved. The state will fund 40% of the grants. The remaining 60% will be funded through the Capital Reserve. The total amount submitted was 6.18 million, with the state being responsible for approximately 2.5 million. The four projects include the upper middle school rooftop chiller, replacement of the existing AHUs with new rooftop units LMS, replacement of five rooftop, rooftop units at MHS, and a partial roof replacement at UMS over gym and auditorium. Uh, next is issue discussed with Montgomery Township. I'll refer to Cookie Franco Hermann for that stuff.
Yeah, the Chair will have Mr. Dyer to step out due to conflict, but it was brought to our attention that the Township approached the district with two requests. First, they wanted a credit for the cost of maintenance of the pool drinking, and Mr. Trent told them that we still needed to upkeep the pool and running, which was still costly. And they also requested the district to waive the per participant usage fee. But he also believes we should not do this because we still have to take care of the pool. So at the end of the day, the committee decided that we were not going to accept the requests from the township.
Thank you. And the last item we discussed was a turf field donation. Mr. Trent was approached by Chris Gundy, Chris Gruny, the Athletic Director, regarding a local donor who wanted to donate 1.8 million dollars to the high school for, to the district for a new turf field. The field will be located by the entrance to the high school. The field will be multi-purpose for field hockey, soccer, and lacrosse. The issue is the additional cost that will occur to the district. The area would need complete infrastructure, including lights, drainage, restroom facilities, and bleachers. And the total cost of the project will be approximately 5 to 6 million dollars. Additional cost to the district is not feasible at this time and would utilize the entire balance of the Capital Reserve. Any questions from the board members?
Well, don't forget the issue about the scoreboard, raising the scoreboard. Well, don't forget the issue about the scoreboard. Raising the scoreboard like ten feet. We haven't addressed that issue yet.
Bring it up in the interview.
Any questions by board members? Next is Policy and Communications Committee, Board Member Dowling.
Good evening. Policy and Communications Committee met on Tuesday morning, September twenty-first at eight fifteen, virtually. And first and foremost, we welcomed a new member of our community, our communications specialist, Ryan Waldus. That'd be disgusting. And he basically just introduced himself to us. He seems like a great addition. Policy number twenty-four nineteen was discussed. We had a conversation about this policy in regard and regulation to ensure that it did not overlook certain protective clauses. The committee was assured that all students are accurately assessed by the threat assessment team. We also talked about this policy is going to be put forward tonight for the first reading during the VOE agenda. Policy zero-one-six-seven was also discussed and was centered around members of the public having to sign their name and address into the notebook on the podium. PCC members agreed that a Chromebook would be made available so that the public can type their name and address so that it is clearly recorded. A PCC member added, asked to revisit the public participation at board meetings at future PCC meetings to discuss virtual access, as there seems to be some discrepancy in terms of who's joined virtually and who does not. We also talked about policy twenty-five-ten. This policy was discussed to clarify the criteria to introduce textbooks into the classroom and the responsibility of the board to approve said textbooks. The PCC committee chair will follow up with the ACI committee with further questions. An upcoming topics for discussion, the emerging topic of AI. A board member brought up questions concerning AI and how it is reflecting or how it's manifesting itself both in the classroom and in teaching. And so we decided as a committee to follow up with Strauss Esme to see if there is a policy that already surrounds this topic. And we will continue to talk about how we can implement a policy for recovery. Questions or comments?
Okay, thank you. Dowling, thank you, Board Member Dowling. So first, CP Franco Herman, our Human Resources Committee report.
We did not have HRC committee meeting this September. Our next meeting will be October tenth.
Okay, thank you. And now our officers report. So on behalf of our officers and representative of our entire board, the Montgomery Township Board of Education is pleased to announce that we have approved a contract with the New Jersey School Boards Association to execute a community-wide strategic planning process, hopefully starting next month. We have a scheduled meeting with our New Jersey School Boards representative, Gwen Thornton, this Friday, and those date details will be obtained at that time. The town's social media platforms are busy with feedback about the state of the district. District staffing are diligently working to fulfill the district goals for no student achievement, and the board is responding by bridging the gap between the long-term vision and day-to-day tasks. In the corporate world, strategic planning is a bit of a buzz phrase. Now, don't get me wrong, having a plan in place will almost always get you better results than throwing caution to the wind. The problem has been that many are too familiar with strategic planning gone awry. The descent into endless meetings, the countless rounds of vetting to goals and follow-up tasks, and ultimately, a plan that is never realized. The numbers back this up with researchers conducting, or concluding, rather, that more than seventy percent of strategic plans are never implemented in the business world. The rules of the game are a little bit different in public education, though. Results aren't based on winning new customers, gaining market share, or exceeding core targets. Instead, strategic planning in education is a way to align the broader community around higher student outcomes. Our strategic planning will include the process of setting goals, deciding on actions to achieve those goals, and mobilizing the resources needed to take those actions. Fun fact, strategic planning, as we know it today, evolved out of military strategy. Ms. Robby, know this. Strategus literally means a general of the army in Greek. And when you think about it, we retain that like military language in the way we talk about our work life today. Frontline workers, being in the trenches and war rooms, to name a few. Conversely and thankfully, however, strategic planning in education has taken its own path to become a far less confrontational discipline. While it initially flowed from business practices due to people moving from the private sector into the public education, many of those planning tools and paradigms have adapted to focus on engagement and consensus. The board communicated to administration that our strategic planning will require functional community and district level support. We will use strategic planning to set the goals of improving student outcomes, responding to our changing demographics, and more, while staying within the given funding box. And finally, we are proud that the current board, under Cookie Patrick and my leadership, has proactively commanded that our strategic planning process includes parents, business owners, local clergy, students, and any other key stakeholder group. We know that without community support and the insight that comes with community engagement, our strategic plan is likely to fail. And while we know we learn from failure, we are looking to create a viable working plan for our school district and our community that focuses on student achievement, building staff capacity, and empowers our parents. So that concludes our officers' report. Do board members have any questions at this time? All right, so hearing none. It is recommended that our Board of Education approves the minutes of the following board meetings. August twenty-second, the executive session and business meeting, and September twelfth, the executive session and workshop and business meeting. So I'm moved that we approved those aforementioned board meeting minutes at this time.
Second.
Can you give a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Felix.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Venus.
Yes.
Ms. Velecogirian.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Herman.
Yes.
Dr. Spence Wallace.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Fantastic. So now we've reached the part of acknowledging correspondence to the board on page three of our agenda, as well as our new business from the public for the board. The instructions delivered for our first action agenda item, public comment, remain applicable. For Secretary Trent, we're going to now open new business from the public to the board at this time.
My name is Sonya, and I'm a junior here at Montgomery High School. I just wanted to start by thanking and acknowledging the Board of Education for recognizing Diwali as an annually recognized holiday. Diwali is more than just a holiday to me. Diwali is a time where I can acknowledge the history of my family, religion, culture, and that is so incredibly important to me. I also want to thank our very own deputy mayor Nina Singh and our community for showing her support. Thank you for your time again for recognizing Diwali.
Hi, my name is Dylan Masler. I'm a freshman here at Montgomery High School. Thank you for giving us Diwali off. Over one point three billion people of all faiths and backgrounds celebrate Diwali in India alone as their most auspicious holiday. Usually when I take Diwali off as an excuse absence, I am met with the plethora of worship from all subjects when I get back. Now I'll be able to travel to loved ones who live farther away without having to worry about schoolwork.
Hello.
Thank you. Right to the mic.
Hello, my name is Chimpreek, and I'm also a freshman in high school. By giving us the day off, we were able to do many customs and activities during Diwali that we couldn't do before, such as attending festivals, greeting rambolis, cleaning our homes, saying many theos to welcome Lakshmi, the goddess of wealth, fortune, power, beauty, prosperity. This gives, this day will give younger generations a chance to explore the culture and history, as well as create memories with their family and friends.
By making Diwali an official holiday, we would encourage these bonds of family and community while also promoting social cohesion. This day off will give families the chance to meet relatives and celebrate their culture together. Oh, yeah. My name is Yubi, and I'm also a freshman at Montgomery High School. Moving on, it is a festival that, it is a festival that transcends religious boundaries and promotes values of unity and diversity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sorry Prabhati, and thank you so much for allowing Diwali to be a day off during next week's school year.
Hi, I'm Sienna Perry.
Hi, I'm Anya Ross, and we're all seventh graders from UMS. Diwali is an important celebration celebrating this festival of light and hope.
We gather here today to thank you for advocating for Indians all across Montgomery.
We thank you for making Diwali an acknowledged holiday off taken off from school because...
What a privilege. Adjustment of the microphone.
It allows all Indians and Indian families to fully enjoy the festival without worrying about any schoolwork. Every year, I celebrate Diwali with my family by going to the temple and enjoying celebrations at home with my family.
Indians make up a significant portion of Montgomery's population. I'm Jane and still celebrate Diwali, though I'm not Hindu. This shows that Diwali is a universal holiday for all Indians. We thank you for making that available for us.
And lastly, we thank you for letting everyone learn and experience the beauty of Diwali with their families. Being half-Indian and half-European, I'm super fortunate to experience different cultures and traditions with my family and friends, with both sides of the family. Now I'm able to do so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah.
Hi, my name is Peter, and I'm, and we are the creators here at Montgomery High School.
I love celebrating Diwali with my family and friends.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Ashwin Goshen.
My name is Soli.
Just take the mic and just go. Morning down.
Hello, I'm Devon Metta. I'm UMS student. And I'm here to thank the Board of Education for making Diwali a day off. Diwali is very important to Indian culture, and with a day off, you have more time to do Indian traditions. Now I can wake up early, pray, and celebrate the festival of, the festival of light with my family.
Hi, my name is Augen, and I'm a student at UMS. Thank you to the Board of Education for making this possible and passing Diwali as a holiday. I'm very grateful I can spend time with my family and friends.
Hi, my name is Leah.
What a privilege. Just lower the volume so that everyone, even those in the back of the room can hear the speakers, please. Thank you so much, everyone.
We appreciate the board. We appreciate the board voting for Diwali to be a official holiday.
Diwali is a holiday celebrated by billions of people around the world, and families and friends get together to celebrate it every year. My family invite friends over, and we have a lot of fun. So thank you for, for giving us time to celebrate, and now I can celebrate without having to worry about schoolwork the next day.
I give all the gratefulness we feel for your celebrations and our family, so I'm glad that we get to celebrate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Sophia Gani, and I'm a junior at the Montgomery High School. In our township, there is a large percentage of new students that celebrate Diwali and are faced with the decision to skip or attend school on, on the auspicious day. Either sacrificing, participating in a long-lasting traditions with their families, or a day's worth of education. The decision to give the students a day off makes events easier for them to enjoy their, makes events easier for them to enjoy their holiday with their families. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kenneth Patel, a junior at Montgomery High. Thank you so much for recognizing Diwali as an official holiday. Ever since I was little, the traditions of fireworks, lighting, small candles, and doing rambolis with my sisters are just some of the things I look forward to this time of year. With the people I love. This day is so special to me and many others because it allows me to bond and create memories with my family, especially my elders, who love to celebrate with younger generation, sharing memories with us in a way, in a way that makes the language barrier disappear. You're incredibly grateful for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nina Singh. I put my address here. I want to thank all these kids who came out, and I want to add my few comments to, yes, Diwali is a big celebration for the Indian community. Growing up, that was a day that I looked forward to all year. So it's really nice to see all these kids here, and thank you so much to the school board for making this effort to give them the day off. I also wanted to, on behalf of myself and Heather Pino, the high school principal, invite everybody here to a Diwali celebration November third, six to eight. And we would love to see everybody, everybody who's in this room, very inclusive. I want to, want everybody to feel the festival of light. So everybody, please put this on your calendar, November third, six to eight, Diwali celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Just write in my, where, where?
Oh, it's at the Montgomery High School. Thank you.
Mic, the mic has dropped. Efficient.
Good evening, board members. My name is Tim Scar, and I live at thirty-two St. Farm Road. And I just wanted to say thank you to the board members affiliated with Champions for Students. Even though you repeatedly dealt with aggressive and false discourse from several community members, you've all held yourselves to the highest standards in your dedication and work achieved for our students, staff, and parents. While some falsely claim that the board does not respect parents, you've proven time and again that not only do you respect parents, but you seek to build stronger communication and connection with them. This is clearly seen in how you respond during meetings, but in so many other ways as well. This is clearly seen in how you respond during meetings, but in so many other ways as well. For instance, the communication specialist you referenced today, to ensure transparency and to share information in a timely manner. You've also hosted several town hall meetings in which parents and board members can have an open exchange in a less formal public setting. Some people don't understand that due to rules and regulations, Board of Ed meetings don't have a question-answer portion in which members can respond to concerns as they come up, which the president spoke about tonight as per the lawyer. You recognize that this can be very frustrating for some parents and came up with a way to hear and answer their concerns. You also respected and acted on parents' concerns in your response to the food service at the school. Children or parents were not okay with the quality of food being served at lunch and as a result, you bid the food service out and hired Mashiur, who works hard to please with high-quality and tasty food. There are certain things a board is in charge of and other things that come from the state and federal guidelines and are out of your control. Know that your intention to do the best for everyone involved in the Montgomery Township School District is seen and appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Am I talking into it? Yes. Francine Pepper, 5 Mystic Drive, Skelman, New Jersey. I hope everyone's enjoying your evening here. I would just like to talk a little bit about Project Veritas and the curriculum. I was, it was not in this building, I was at the board meeting when Dr. Stacy Robustelli, I think that's her last name, gave the presentation from Hightops. It was excellent. As a lobbyist for the New Jersey Education Association, I have followed the adoption of the sex ed curriculum since before COVID. It was done the right way. I know people think it was done in the dark of night, but that is absolutely not true. I was at multiple public testimony sessions of the State Board of Education in Trenton and I find it a little disturbing that we're talking about Project Veritas, the group that exposed, I say, in quotes, Hightops, because that is a group that engages in significant disinformation. I am a librarian by trade. I have an MLIS from Rutgers University. For those of you who don't understand the difference between disinformation and misinformation, disinformation is deliberately wrong. It's designed to create this chaos. And that is not the same as misinformation, which is a mistake when you just misunderstand something. It's very easy, I was a teacher too, a very easy mnemonic, D and M. For people who believe this disinformation, I suggest that perhaps you need some lessons in information literacy to learn to distinguish between what is good information and what is false information. And I have to say, I'm disturbed that some members of the Board of Education here are believing what is blatant disinformation from a group that is known for kombat gaming, or maybe that's the wrong word, but for using disinformation tactics that have been shown multiple times to be false and incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Marson Arua. I'm at 20 carousel chase in Mount Fale. I wanted to actually thank the Board for approving Diwali as well. My husband is Indian and so we do celebrate. And we actually go to a good bar out in Lawrenceville and those ceremonies don't take place until like 7:00 PM. So by the time they're wrapped up and we get home, it's usually 10:30 or later. And then I had a high schooler who was getting up so early in the morning having to be at school. So it also matters a lot to our family and we'd like to thank everyone for recognizing that the diversity in Montgomery is what makes it so awesome. This year alone, we approve Eid and then also Diwali and I think this is very momentous and something very big to celebrate. And what I also want to recognize is that there are so many children here tonight way past their time that they should be out, I'm sure, who have to get up for school tomorrow, but were taking part in the process. And I think it's really important that community members come out and they see these meetings and also the township committee meetings and that they become involved in our community because without that community engagement, it just, things don't happen. So thank you to the public and thank you to the board members and we really appreciate everybody's time on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to Superintendent.
Hi, my name is Gloria India. I actually work at Orchard Hill. I'm a Spanish teacher. I also, I'm representing Orchard Hill and the MDA. I'm the head rep there. And I just want to share, first of all, I want to thank you for being a part of the Board. Other than all the work you do, I'm also a parent at Marty, so I thank you. I just want to share little things that we're doing, amazing things we're doing in Orchard Hill. A spirit about the Little Red Building, a little update. The spirit is at Running High at our new Early Childhood Centre, which is home to all our pre-K age students. The students are enjoying having related arts pushed into their classrooms for extended experiences, movement, in movement, the arts and reading. Our pre-K staff has turned what used to be the Little Red Building into a dynamic and inviting instructional space where children can learn and play. I also have to talk a little bit about the Spanish and what we're doing to celebrate Hispanic heritage in first, second, and now kindergarten, with the school day kindergarten. So we're sharing our culture. The students are comparing their culture with Hispanic heritage culture and how we celebrate, how I celebrate it. And when we have the time, we do some awesome brain breaks where now they're learning how to dance tango, conga and salsa. Actually loving that. A little bit more about, let me click then, if I wrote this. The full-day kindergarten program started great this year. The kindergarten team decided to plan ahead and plan color dates for the first two weeks as a way to build community and help the students feel excited about coming to school. Colors are something that kindergartners usually know before they come to Orchard, so they feel part of the community, so it's a nice way to build upon their knowledge. Based with activities, different activities they can do, read alouds, and that they're connected to color. Sorry, I couldn't read my handwriting. Forgot them there. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Hello, everybody. How are you? My name is Mohammed. I hope you're all doing well.
You write your name in the phone.
So I hope everyone is doing well. Today, I would like to tell you a story. We're all in this boat of life. First, I would like to spread peace, of course. We're all in this boat of life and this ocean of this life is big. We're all on this boat and I think we should start with peace. Leaving our journey from our, to our final destination, which is peace. As we know, during the journey of life in the boat, there are some rocky and difficult times. There are some waves. There are some storms. And I think that is really important for us to navigate through these storms. Now, we all know the different things that are happening in the society right now and the different things that are being taught to our kids. Now, as traditional values that we have, we like to protect our kids in this boat of life. Some of the things that we encounter during this journey is that we have certain values that we like to uphold. We have some values that we like to protect. So some things, as in gender orientation, we all love each other. We all love people. But for it to be self-imposed or imposed upon us, what our children should believe, is a difficulty that we have as traditional value. Our guardianship of our children gives us the right to protect our children and what they learn in schools. We don't want our kids to be changed based on what their opposing values are against us. So basically, we know what we believe in, we know what we stand for, and we should uphold that. We should respect each other for that and I think it shouldn't be imposed upon us. Now, there are certain things that we would love to out of on this journey because our kids have to be protected. Our kids have minds that are beautiful and they should believe and trust who they are. They should know their own identity and they should believe in themselves. And we should love all people from different orientations. Now, we don't want to focus on these differences, of course, because in this life, we're all humans. We all should love each other. But at the same time, I think we should focus on the sciences in school. Mathematics, social studies, and science and things that allow us to progress to get our livelihood in our school. So as we navigate through this journey of life, we should always remember the anger that we have. That is the love and the respect and protection of our children. We all love our children.
Thirty seconds.
Yes. We all love our children. We should all defend and protect our children. And as we reach our destination, I think we should all remember that although there are storms in this journey of life, we should all appreciate each other while we're here and have humility, love, and respect. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Grayson. I live at 122 Monroe Avenue. I just want to say, I think it's a shame that we are suspending the relationship with Hightops as a mental health professional, which I've been for 15 years. I have consistently referred adolescents and young people to Hightops as an organization where they are supported, cared for, and their mental health is attended to around a lot of very difficult issues that come up for kids that age. And they are an organization that's been established and around for something like 30 years. Everyone in the mental health field will absolutely refer to them in a heartbeat and it is just, it's because of a questionable, I use that word, but there's other words I could use, source like Project Veritas, which has now been suspended actually and is no longer operational because its founding member was embezzling funds, I believe, or misusing them. So that entire operation is actually shut down and we are, as a board, is facing a suspension of a contract with a local and long, a local organization with a long history in this area of helping the mental health of students. We're going to suspend that relationship based on an expose or whatever you want to call it by a questionable organization that specializes in disinformation. I hope that some more information can be collected by Superintendent McLaughlin so that it can be made clear exactly what is being done, what is happening, and how we are incorporating. Which I also was in attendance at the meeting when the PhD-level professor from Hightops presented what would be involved in the curriculum and it was excellent. It was academic. It was 100%. You know, there is no indoctrination piece of any kind and anyone who thinks that about this is reading it incorrectly. And if people have values that are specific to their own religion that are that deeply held then there is religious school for that. This is public school and we do what the government has mandated and it's mandated that we include this diversity piece and that we attend to the mental health of our students and their well-being by partnering with organizations that help guide us to do so via our curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. And prior to my next speaker, I would just like to remind the public, consistent with our Board of Education policy 9131 that speaks to civility and after speaking and confirming with our board attorney, our meeting rules prohibit clapping, shouting, booing, or other forms of agreement or disagreement of a speaker's points during our public comment. That just serves as a point of order reminder for our participating public. Thank you, sir. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Ramon. Some of you know me. Seventy-six, Red Oak Way. Three kids in high school. The one I specifically want to talk about today is a member of the LGBTQ community. Bear with me where I'm going to go. Anyone on the board aware of the CROWN Act? It is not a Netflix show? It's a little nifty acronym for Creating a Respectful and Open World for Natural Hair. And it has made its way into the laws of several US states and municipalities. It is a law that stands against discrimination in jobs and schools based on the way a person's hair grows naturally. To be crystal clear, this is a law intended to prevent discrimination against curly hair and it doesn't bother itself at how curly your hair is. True, I am the example of this. Because you're looking, you're like, what is this guy talking about? Stay with me, stay with me. A few of you in this crowd on this board... Does a few of you on this board then look like you have had some experience with curly hair yourself? I'm sure your kids have had with two. So here's a little thought experiment. As far as I know, New Jersey has not passed the CROWN Act, which means we can discuss, review, renew, begin, amend, or upend our school's curly hair policy. How would you feel if I suggested we did that? How would you feel if I argued for labeling and separating those curly-haired kids? Would you feel anger, contempt, disgust, perhaps, probably? Maybe just a smidge of this dehumanization? And you might even be wondering right about now, who the hell is this guy? Now, don't fret, I have no qualms with curly hair. To discriminate against curly hair is ridiculous and I can't believe enough people in our country feel differently that we have to have a law about it. But those feelings you just experienced, that is how parents of LGBTQ kids in our district are starting to feel about certain board members, actions, and queries who want to discuss, review, renew, begin, amend, or upend LGBTQ policies constantly. When RFK announced to a crowd in Memphis that MLK had been shot, he said, "We in the United States needs to, we do not need division. What we need is not hatred, but love and wisdom and compassion towards one another and a feeling of justice towards those who still suffer within our country." At school, we teach our children daily not to bully. We even have it as a mantra on the walls. Can we please, as a community and as a Board of Education, remind ourselves of that? Thank you, Mrs. Ma.
Thank you.
Hi, Catherine. This is around 25, Terrytown Terrace. I just have nothing prepared, but I was moved by this boat analogy that I just heard a moment ago and how we should be focusing on math and science and things that will, loosely quoting, like, progress society. And I just want to argue that, that a lot of things that propel society forward less about math and engineering and science and physics and more about tolerance and being able to work with other people and live around other people and listen to other people and provide for one another. And I, as a former elected official in this town, I know what you're all giving up to be here. I know the time. I know the personal sacrifice. I know that there were some days I wouldn't even go to ShopRite because I didn't want to run into anybody and because I was afraid. But we live in a community that I'm very proud of and I want to keep being proud of. And what I think on that boat in that tumultuous ocean that we're all living in is it's great that you need somebody who is good with navigation and knows how to steer the boat, but it's also really good that you have somebody who knows how to keep everybody calm. And it's really good if you have somebody who knows how to cook food and not poison everyone. And it's really important if you have somebody who is good at breaking up fights and mediating disagreements. And it's beneficial to be able to share a small space with people who don't think like you or look like you or believe in the things you believe in. or look like you or believe in the things you believe in or love the people you love the way that you think they should be loved. And I worry a lot about my own two girls, who aren't amazing students. They're not great athletes. But I want them to be proud of where they live. And one of them is here, so I don't know where she went. Mother of the year. I don't know, I just, I get very upset when I hear that we're thinking about doing things like segregating our LGBTQ students, when half of our students are still figuring out who they are. And now we're creating an environment where they don't think they can feel how they want to feel and talk about how they feel with their guidance counselor. Now they're going to be outed for being who they are. And I just, I'm just very concerned about this. And I just really hope we don't go down that path. And I want my girls to continue to be happy to be here and proud to be here. And also thank you for approving DeWali. Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee members?
If you'd just play it, please. I'm Sophia Robb. I'm excusing myself as student representative to the Board of Education. I represent only my own personal views and opinions. Am I good? Okay, I wanted to address the board tonight because as a student of Montgomery, simply put, as I've said at this microphone many times before, I value my education. That means all of it. And I value the education of my peers. And so when I see educational services like High Tops being questioned for quite frivolous and insanely unimaginably, you know, underthought reasoning, in my opinion, is just a disgraceful reflection of the educational values and the principles that we're trying to instill in our children. We are trying to teach our kids to come at problems and approach them with understanding and come at them with the idea of truth and knowledge. I have the ability as a 17-year-old to go on social media and to look at a video and say, "Hey, that's fake news. Hey, that's clickbait. That's not right, that's not true," and make that educated, informed decision. If I can do it, I think that's a pretty reasonable expectation to hold the adults in my community too. Especially my leaders too. And so I'm asking the Board of Education to put that emphasis on finding the truth and information and clarity. I also ask certain questions specifically as well. Like there were specific issues that might be a problem to parents. Please clarify, what specific issues do you mean? What specific topics do you mean? What specific topics in the curriculum do you mean? What's the, I know, you know, some certain specific examples weren't mentioned because of, you know, audience or child, you know, children being around, which I understand. But what specific examples? Because me, as an informed member, for me to be an informed member of the public, I need to know that, if that makes sense. So I just think that we got to come at this with the lens and the approach of what's actually going to help our students. Not looking at things that sounds cool or sound the craziest or most sensationalized. So sorry, wasn't the most prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
About to write my address.
Hi, I'm Paige Corrigan, I'm 55, Terrace Place, Illinois. That was excellent. So good. Ditto on everything you said. So today's political climate has education, has made public education hyper-partisan. And it's unnecessary. The shared futures of all our children are too important for us to allow a loud misguided faction in our community to alienate or discriminate against our children. Their disinformation campaigns are distracting parents from the fact that they continue to have the ultimate authority and responsibility over the growth and development of their own children. A fact that I believe every parent here and in our community supports. Their latest efforts to fabricate and disseminate disinformation to the intellectually vulnerable has demonstrated a new low and desperation. To employ Project Veritas is insane to me. Just, if you're not familiar with them, they are a national right-wing activist group known for creating and using heavily edited secret recordings to discredit organizations and individuals. And their goal is to compromise their operations. And this is, seems completely desperate to me to stoop to that level. They have a lengthy history of targeting teachers, unions, and educators across the country in its campaigns, all in the, in the tech to build distrust in public education and spark culture wars in our schools. High Tops was targeted, and then you were targeted. It's divisive, it's deceptive, and it's wrong. We deserve better, you deserve better, and our kids deserve better. The community is sick and tired of these ever-shifting dirty tactics and attacks. We support you and thank you for remaining steadfast and champion for all of our kids, including theirs. Last week, I attended back-to-school night at the high school by two kids. Words can't quite express how impressed I was with the teachers and administrators I met. There's such a positive feeling of community. The recognition, acceptance, and celebration of all of our diverse student population was evident. You could feel it, it gave me hope. I was impressed by how every subject was being approached in a very innovative way that emphasized student participation and free thinking. What stood out the most, though, was that the teachers were happy.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Rosenthal. I live at 119 Woodview, Illinois. I was not prepared to speak today, but I also was moved by the concept of that the school should only be focusing on math and science. I am a math and science geek all through my life. I have been like that. I have never liked any other subject. I went to college for engineering. I've always been a math and science person. I raised two children who went through this school district. Both math and science children, both went to college for engineering and are both now working engineers. So I would not be happy if my children went through this school district without their health, language arts, their skills, their tolerance, all the things that they taught in this school district that make them the great people that they are today. So I just am speaking out to have the thought that not everybody needs to be completely health and science in this school district. We need everything else that supports a whole child. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Speaker Lana Sisker, I'm a senior in elementary school. And I just wanted to talk about how important it is to keep LGBTQ people in elementary schools because I have a few friends in my classes with me, and they're really, they're really important to me, and they're really good friends. And I'm hanging out with them. And I feel like taking them away from me would be very good to me and other people who I know that also have connections with them. And I just feel like it wouldn't be something good that we would do separating people. Because they're normal people like the rest of us. But I feel like if you, like, if you, like, it wouldn't be something good to do separating people apart.
Thank you. I'm new business in the Board of Public. Comment now, close. If there's anyone after this gentleman here, would you please line up behind the podium so that the Board is aware you'll be delivering public comment? Thank you.
So I just have a question before I start. Can I address the public?
No, sir.
Last meeting, people were addressing the public. So that's not okay, even for families?
That's not okay at this time, at this point.
Well, I want to make sure the laws are being applied equally here.
Yes, sir.
Great. Okay, so let me give you specifics. I've been asking for what books are in the curriculum, not what types of books, what books for five months that has not been answered. I came to the last board meeting. I said I would pay for it out of pocket, so it comes not out of anybody's pocket, but my own. And did not get an answer on the last board meeting. So what books are being read to my child? As far as High Tops, do we have some allegiance to them? There is no other organization that can give us the services that they have? As far as your diligence, we'd like to know what due diligence was done. And I'm going to concede the ground that you did do your due diligence. Does that mean they're not corrupt now? Their government has been corrupt for many years. Every form and everything power has corrupted people. So for High Tops, not to be corrupted, that's not a big deal, okay? We need to move away from them. That's the reality of things. We can go to another organization that can provide those services. I'd like to know what books my kids are being read to? I'd like to know when they're being read. What books are in those libraries that are not accounted for? That is a very simple question that I've been asking. Is that specific enough for you, young lady? Yes. Yes.
Point of order. You are out of order, sir. Point of order.
You are very much out of order. You may not speak to a student that way.
Point of order.
She's sitting on the board.
He's a student representative. Point of order.
Under me.
No. Nope. We're not giving.
I move that we suspend this open public meeting at this time.
But when your daughter was doing it, it was open.
There's a motion on the floor.
Roll up, man.
Stop, stop, stop. You should go off.
No.
Come meet me somewhere else.
Are we prepping now?
Mr. Wayne, Mr. Wayne, please. Go away. Suspect.
Suspend the meeting. Can I get?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. I'm new at the meeting. Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you. We're going to resume our open public meetings. I have a second.
Mr. Carlson, second.
Okay, great, thank you. Public meeting is now resumed at 9:51 PM. In line to new business of the Board. Thank you.
Hello, I am a Montgomery senior, currently in Montgomery High School. I am. I have, related to the High Tops issue that is going on. Oh, my name is Michael Flessiano. And. Oh, yes, I did. I am a part of the LGBTQ community, and I have used High Tops as a, to help me out when I started my transition. I am transgender. And it has helped me so much. High Tops is a great resource that I have always told all my LGBT friends about. And I just wanted to say how useful it was, especially to someone that does use it personally. Thank you.
Sir.
There are no questions, but I do want to address the students here to let them know that my commitment to providing safe schools for everyone, that you feel valued and respected, has not wavered, not from anything that was said at this meeting and for the staff as well.
And I just want to make a comment. Thank you for speaking up and being very vulnerable and sharing your identity with us. Thank you so much.
Can I also add something? I just wanted to say also, just to kind of echo that, echo that as well. My, and I can always speak for myself, but my suggestion to temporarily suspend High Tops honestly has nothing to do with the work High Tops is doing because I absolutely understand the media and what people and organizations can put out whether it's true or not. So that's not even the point. It honestly has to do with, and again, my point, this is my point of view. I come to these meetings and I feel like our town is divided, and I don't want that. I want us to feel like a community together. And by making that suggestion was really, it came from the fact that I want to respect every point of view because what I hear is some people who have a lot of parents that have a lot of questions. And there's parents who feel comfortable. And I just want to be able to respect everybody and hear what everyone's saying and take those couple of weeks to say, okay, as a group, as a board, let's regroup and make sure we're asking the right questions, to make sure everyone's feeling comfortable. Because, like Mary said, you know, our commitment, and I feel the same, is that students feel comfortable, feel safe, parents feel comfortable. And it's just taken that little extra time, as we said, just to make sure that we're making the right choices here.
Thank you, Board Member Downing. Has Board Member Carlson?
I won't keep this too much longer, but I really do need to echo. We are in the position as board members to ask questions. We are not here to, you know, completely disband something that is working, isn't working. It's just our job to ask questions. And that's truly what we're doing as a board. And I hope that you trust that we seek answers. That's truly what we're trying to do, and we're trying to represent the entire community. But please don't hear tonight as, you know, we want to disband something. We really are just asking questions on the behalf of the community. And I hope that you can walk away trusting that. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
I'd like to say that I think that we hear a bit of hyperbole sometimes. We hadn't been talking about banning books, and yet the monkey news went there. And tonight, we're not talking about banning gays or anything like that. We're talking about, we're talking about looking at a company that may or may not have been being disenthusiastic.
Thank you, Board Member Carlson. So just to echo and summarize everyone's sentiments. Oh, I apologize. Go ahead, Board Member, we'd like to turn it again.
No, I just wanted to, I just wanted to echo the superintendent's comment. There's going to be no separation, no division, nothing is going to change. We're looking at how best to make sure that we provide for all of our students. So I just wanted to make sure that what Superintendent said stays true to everything that we do here every day. Thank you.
We all wish to undermine the due diligence of any of our staffing. We do have a responsibility, as Board Member Downing, to examine an issue when it's brought before us from a zoom-out or bird's eye view lens rather than a narrow one, and collect data and speak from a measured point of view. and collect data and speak from a measured point of view. And at this time, we're going to move on to our action agenda items if there's no further board member's statements. So our action agenda items consist of 1.1 to 4.1. I move that we vote to approve those aforementioned action agenda items. Several?
Second.
Board Secretary Trent, roll call, please. Oh, there's a discussion. Withdraw that roll call and open the floor for discussion at this time. Are there any further board member's statements about any action agenda item? If not, we will settle with civil call, please. Board Secretary Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Vila.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Leuck adjourned again.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Ms. Frankel-Herman.
Yes.
Dr. Spunball.
Yes.
Thank you. Action items, 1.1 through 4.1, Carrie and Ido.
Thank you, everyone. We have reached the conclusion of our open public meeting this evening. I was really moved by the one student that made the statement about the bonds of family and community. That statement has actually resonated with me, and I hope my board colleagues and administration that are present. We would like to thank everyone for their participation today, parents, students, board members, district staff. And also, I think it's important to acknowledge that it's, the superintendent is really dynamic in her effort to continue to cultivate an environment of inclusivity and collaboration. So, with the placement of DeWali on our fiscal year 25 calendar was actually, was absolutely, you know, a collective effort consisting of board members, you know, input from the community, parents, and students that did so, one of your pitch, please, Board Secretary Trent, thank you, that did so in a manner that was executed with a resolution, any resolution focused in mind. Should there be no further objections, I move that we adjourn on Tuesday, September 26, 2023, open public meeting at this time.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your night.